Good evening. Call of meeting to order, and welcome to the council meeting of February 23rd. Madam Clerk, would you read the full call, please?
Mr. Cantle, Mr. Shyland.
Present.
Mr. Moore, Ms. Paasnuck.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Mr. Shiverdecker.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. West.
Here.
Six council members present, two absent.
Very good. You're right with me. Pastor Bruce Williamson is with us again this evening, and he will lead us in the case. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Glad to be here. Heavenly Father, we rejoice and give you thanks that you've blessed us with another day in your presence, and that you're overseeing and watching over our community tonight, even as our city does its business for the people. For all of this, we're grateful. We want to be faithful, Lord, to pray for the northern gulf tonight. Tornadoes are really hammering parts of Louisiana and Alabama, even as we meet, and so we pray for the minimal property damage and life and limb protection for all those folks in harm's way. We lift up all those that are here tonight to share in this meeting. We pray, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, all the administrators and department heads, and the boots on the ground in this city every day. I want to be faithful to always pray for those who make our way of life in this community a blessing. I continue to pray, Lord, for the folks that are attached to the city families, and ask you to continue to bless them. That would include, but not be limited to, Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, and Mr. Shyland, Mayor Benton, Chief Myers, Gabriel Polston, and also, Lord, I want to pray for Bill Laswell, Carolyn's husband, and, Lord, Ms. Bush Jos, and anyone else in the city family who needs your perpetual care. Bless this session tonight, Lord, and let you be honored as our delegated elected officials do the work of this community. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, Pastor.
At the beginning of every council meeting, we've set aside a time for anyone from the city, or resident of the city, who has a concern that they'd like to bring to the council, and we just ask that you give us your name and your address, and limit your comments to five minutes, of which the city clerk will keep time on that. So at this time, I invite anyone to come forward who has a concern that they would like to share with the council concerning city business. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
I wanted to say, last night's meeting was awesome. Very, very informative, gave us a lot of new insights. If you choose to have another meeting, I would like it advertised more, even, you know, the two radio stations, Channel 13, which most in this area watch. And also, I don't know if you can do it, but if you could put the water treatment first and the park second. I think the water treatment is the most important, and I think if you put that first, you've got a better chance of it passing. That's all I want to say.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Okay. We'll, anyone else who has a concern they'd like to address the council about, who's not on the agenda? Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll move on with our agenda. The next item is approval of council minutes from January 26th. Those, again, were included in your packet. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, I entertain a motion for approval. Motion through.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from January 26th. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. Thank you. Also in your council packet was the minutes from February 9th. If you, are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Very good. Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve the minutes from February 9th. All those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. Also included in your packet was the financial report for the month of January, and his host while is with us this evening. Ms. Kathy, if you'd go over those with us, please?
We received our last month of 2015 sales tax. It's now recorded, and we ended the year 2.4% less than the prior year. So if you remember, the year before that, we were nine, nine point something ahead at the end of the year, so we backed off 2.4% from that. And I did, there is no sales tax revenue recorded in January because that collection was accrued back to 15. So that makes our revenues in general less. I also made note of the fact that we have entered the accrued payroll entry, so the first payroll in January, nine of that 10 days was accrued back to December, because it was actually time worked in 15. So expenses are less by that amount in every fund. There wasn't a lot going on in January. We did make the principal and interest payment on the sewer bonds. I think the principal was $375,000, and $19,000 was the interest. I'd be glad to answer any questions that anyone has.
Any questions to Ms. Kathy?
No.
If not, I entertain a motion for approval.
Motion.
Very good. I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I have a motion in the second to approve the financials for the month of January. Is there any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Nice job. Under unfinished business, we've discussed the last couple of meetings or so, purchasing of trash bags or yard waste bags, and so for resale. There is a sample here. If you haven't had a chance to put your hands on it, let's pass it down. Well, it looks like we have two.
Just one.
And those have, I think they let the bids this afternoon. J.C., you want to come up and talk about that a little?
Courtney might have to.
Or Courtney?
Size of that, that's cool.
Everybody stay over.
I know what J.C.'s question is. Courtney opened the bids and stuff today, and for 20,000 bags, the cheapest ones came in at 46 cents a piece, somewhere like that, $9,200.
I did a little shopping in the community. It's bound to afford locally.
Okay.
Is there a, yeah?
So, I mean, if we pay 46, well, we might charge a little for them.
We'd just charge them 50 cents, make it easy.
Even 50.
I think it's more of a convenience thing, more than trying to compete with other prices in town.
So it's been a few cents higher than private sector. Doesn't hurt my feelings, Billy.
We will have them down here at City Hall.
Well, they'll be for sale at City Hall and at the warehouse office.
Oh, there you go.
Or if you just want to do it here at the warehouse office, or at City Hall, that's fine, too.
Or, last time we had them, you could call in, and we would deliver them on our route. Is that going to be available?
We would prefer not to do that, but that's entirely up to the council and you, Mayor.
Well, I think it's best when they come to City Hall, in my opinion, yes.
Do all sales through City Hall.
Let's try it if you have some senior, you know, folks that are incapacitated that call, and we could try to make some accommodation there.
See how long it takes. How many bags you getting?
20,000.
How many?
20,000.
See how long that lasts us.
I think J.C.'s question was, who's going to pay for them? Is that coming out of council money, or is that going to be in J.C. money?
Well, who gets the sale on them?
Well, that's what I said. J.C., you're probably going to get stuck with it, but then you'll get the sales.
Get the extra.
He gets the money.
We spend our money.
Wow, you better get rich.
That'd raise our money.
J.C. will pick it up.
J.C., how many, how many bags did you get first time you did?
70,000.
70? How long did they last?
Since 2004 up until probably about 2011, 2012, maybe. We still had some left around then.
About 10,000 a year then, so this'll last us a couple of years.
Hopefully, and hopefully not.
Okay. Thank you.
So is your bag in the city going to be seasonal, or are they available all year round?
All year round.
All year round.
All year round, City Hall, and you get the profit.
Because that's part of the issue, right, is that they're not available?
In the winter, at the store, yes.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
Very good. Thank you, J.C. We're going to take care of it.
Thank you.
Do you need a motion?
If you feel like it, but probably not.
I think that's, I think he's got room.
I'm good without doing it.
Okay. Let's move on to new business. Just like William Woods is wanting to have a project. Is Ms. Romaker with us?
Yeah.
Thank you. Welcome. Nice to have you.
I'm glad to be here. I'm Hannah Romaker, and I'm here on behalf of William Woods, and I just want to talk to you guys about getting Greek Life at William Woods more involved in the community of Fulton. And we're looking to do a lot of service projects to help better the city of Fulton. So like, if anybody needs help grooming their lawn, if they're, if they have a disability and they need help, like, taking care of certain things, or maybe even going to, like, nursing homes and helping clean them, but we just really want some ideas and get in contact with people who can help us get more involved in the city of Fulton, so we can kind of give back to what Fulton has given us. And that's all.
Who do they, who are they supposed to contact then?
Yes. We're just looking to contact, like, anybody who can set us off in the right direction to, like, get more involved in, like...
Do you have, like, a phone number that we can call, or somebody can call to give you ideas and suggestions?
Yes, you can actually call my phone number, and it's 636-734-2364, and I will handle all of that. I'm on the, I'm VP of Scholarship and Service on Panellistic Board at William Woods, so I'll be handling all that.
So you want these services to be all indoor, or can they be some outdoor projects?
Since it's becoming, becoming more warmer, I think we can do, like, indoor and outdoor, and depending on the weather, of course.
Your last name again?
Romaker. It's R-O-M-A-K-E-R.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Wonderful.
See if we can get to help to get the word out. Okay.
Clay, you have a list? You have a list?
Okay.
Wonderful.
Beth Ozrahoff is with us this evening with the YMCA, and it looks like we're going to have a color burst run.
We are going to have a color burst run on April 30th. I believe the route is in your packet, the same route that we did last year, and I talked to Chief Myers. We're not going to close any roads. They're going to help us cross Route Z, so we can do that safely. We're thinking start time's going to be at 8:30, and then we're normally done by 9:30 or 10:00.
Very good. Sounds like a lot of thought.
Yeah, it does.
Any questions for Ms. Ostrah?
Are you going to have, like, volunteers stationed at other areas?
We are. We're going to have volunteers at our color stations, and it's, this year it's in conjunction with our Healthy Kids Day, so April 30th is YUSA's Healthy Kids Day, so all the YMCA's across the nation celebrate it. So we'll also have a Kids Mile. Calway Kids Bank will be there, and we have a couple other people that will be there, kind of to do a full fun day of family, friends, and fitness, so keep your fingers crossed for good weather.
Yes.
For sure. Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one for the chief. Chief Myers, are you okay with this route? Think we can handle it?
Yeah, we just, we just got this. Last week.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need for approval.
Second.
Very good. I have a motion in the second to approve the route and the dent. Any further discussion of that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yeah. It's really not that bad.
It's fine. I just love it.
Would you do it?
If I do that, will you guys push me out?
Yeah, you're staying.
No, you have to be here with the rest of them.
Continue to share. Very good. Next on the list, we have a new fire chief, and again, we're very excited that he's joined the ranks, and Todd, you want to come up and introduce yourself and kind of give us some of your first impressions?
Greetings. I think I've met most of you as you were coming in this evening. Todd Farley, I'm your fire chief of City Fulton. I've been in the fire service for a total of 28 years. Worked for the last eight years for the Central Jackson County Fire Protection District, which protected the city of Blue Springs, Grand Valley, and Lake Tappewinkle. Married, three kids, all out of house, which is kind of new to us. We're so recent empty nesters, which is, if my kids are watching this, it's really sad, but it's really a new beginning, so kind of starting over in a lot of different ways. I think I've met just about everyone at the fire department. I'm impressed. You have a professional group of firefighters, from the volunteer ranks to the career ranks. I've met my fellow department heads, and again, equally as impressed, they've been very helpful. So I look forward to working with you guys. If there's any questions or anything that I can do for you, please let me know.
So, so when are you moving?
Well, I kind of moved.
Yeah, we're going to close on your house.
We close hopefully Monday. It's all done, and we're moving. I have kind of temporarily moved. I'm living in Station 1, and it makes it pretty convenient to really embed myself and get to know these folks, and I got to tell you, these folks have made me feel very welcome, and I couldn't be happier.
Started pulling pranks on you yet?
Not yet. It might be getting close. I'm not sure. So I'll answer any questions you have about me, or...
Good to have you.
Yes, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's good to be here.
Just let us know when you need them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, I know you like them to live in town, but do they have to live in the office, too?
There's a story behind that, and I'll save that for after the meeting.
All right. Okay. Very good.
That was good.
Next on our agenda is a time set aside for any council member to have something they'd like to bring forward that's not on the agenda for discussion.
I'd like to...
Open that up this time. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, have we ever participated in a, the back-to-school tax-free weekend within the county and the city of Fulton?
Yeah. We approved that ordinance about two months ago.
Okay, but I'm just coming up on, go ahead.
Because generally, we, about two months ago, we approved that ordinance, as well as the green energy assist, energy efficiency.
Energy store.
The reason we did it a couple of months ago is, for the past couple of years, three years, four years, we used to participate.
Right.
But we were, the last couple of years, we were just too slow in being able to get it approved and adopted and submitted to the state sales tax people in time for it to take effect.
Right.
So I just put in my calendar for December to do, to do both of those for 2016.
Okay.
And the city council approved both of those.
Well, we did, so that's, both have been approved.
The city council has already approved both of those for 2016.
I understand, second. Okay. Also, county, now, do we need to...
That's up to them.
But I mean, that's something independent.
We can't do anything with them.
No, of course not. I didn't know if they were in on it or not. Okay. That's just one thing I, so we're ready for it.
I believe the state also issues a list of counties and cities, and it'll be closer to that time, but they will issue a list of everyone who participates.
They do, because I know they did before, and I weren't in it. Okay. Thank you. Shannon, thank you.
That's all. Okay. I have a few.
Go for it.
The house on Bluff Street up here that's being renovated, starting to get a cumulative lot of trash in the backyard again. Actually, it looks better tonight than what it did this weekend, but let's keep an eye on that. Chinewith House, I don't know that he owns it anymore. I think somebody else has it, but it's looking pretty bad this weekend. I've had another call on it, if you wouldn't mind. Last, last meeting, we had a comment from a visitor about the inmate work release, and I'd like to go on record as saying I'm very supportive of that. It gets the inmates out of, out of the institution, out of confinement. Thank you. And, I mean, we're paying for them whether they're, whether they're in there or they're outside as state taxpayers, and it gives them a chance to make a contribution to the community. And we don't get any dangerous ones or anything like that, correct?
Correct. And they do good work?
And they do very good work.
Wonderful.
So, I mean, they did a lot of work up at the animal shelter, and they've been building these signs around town. I think, I think it's great, so I encourage that. The last thing I had on my mind was, two meetings ago, when I wasn't here, Mary wasn't here, and Steve weren't here, there was a discussion about giving an electric discount for new businesses, and I don't agree with that. And I really personally think that it should have been, it needs to be passed by ordinance. Doing it so close to a residential rate hike, I just think was not the best timing in the world. That's my opinion. Okay? I wanted to go on the record for that.
Okay.
That's all I have, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay.
Very good. We'll move on to resolutions.
See, it has that.
Our first resolution for this evening is Resolution Number 3250, which has to do with a contract agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald, first of mine, and I work. Councilman Vaughn, would you please present Resolution 3250?
Resolution 3250, the resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the Burns &amp; McDonald agreement with the city of Fulton for services associated with the inflow and infiltration strategic plan and storm waters or storm sewer metering. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 3250 at tonight's meeting.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Kyle, you want to talk about this, or Dara?
Please.
Yes, this agreement with Burns &amp; McDonald is for 19 flow meters that go in our sewer system and, and 19 sectors of town, if you will, to quantify how much rainwater, inflow and infiltration, storm water, we're getting into our sanitary sewer system, so we can figure out what areas, what sectors of town, that we need to focus our efforts on first, so we can start tackling those problems in a more organized fashion than we have in the past. And also, as Bill likes to point out, it also tells us where not to focus as much.
Okay.
So, as much as it is showing us where the most is, well, it's also saying, hey, stay over here, don't, don't hop over in this other area.
Yeah, of course. Are these movable around? In other words, you can, these aren't stationary, there's something we can move around?
They are movable. Yeah.
It's about a 60-day project. We will not own the meters.
So we're like renting, yeah?
We're like renting.
Renting, okay. Okay.
So they've looked at a map of our sewer system, and they've picked out 19 locations strategically to figure out?
We've, we've given a map of our sanitary sewer system, and along with them, interacting with them, picked out 19 areas of town, tried to break it up as evenly as we could.
Well, it's going to be the whole town. We broke the town up into 19 areas.
Uh-huh.
Exactly.
So the whole town's going to get metered.
Right.
Right.
And we might find out that...
Awesome.
The northeast section doesn't have any, the northwest or the southeast does, or something like that.
That's where it's all at.
Right.
One, I'd like to point out that...
And that's really more gross than what you're talking about, but, yeah.
We interviewed four different companies, and they all did a really nice job, but one reason with Burns &amp; McDonald is we own four of these meters, and I believe they've already taken the meters we have back to their shop to calibrate and test and fine-tune to make sure that they are up to function and up to speed.
Cool.
And then they're going to train us on how to install and really use them. We've had it for a number of years, and we've really had poor luck, but after listening to the gentleman that came into the presentation, I think a lot of that's just got to do with our installation methods. So they're going to train us on how to use them, and then what we hope to do with our four meters is after we get a couple of sizable rains, we hope to be able to take our meters into one of the bad areas and do, and even do some submeter, break that, break that one area up into three or four areas to really focus a little closer onto what the bad areas are.
Sure.
The overall cost of this project is $107,900.
Excellent.
But I would like to point out that a couple of years ago, we got a $500,000 community development block grant that we use to line the brick manholes in town, as well as raise a lot of the manholes that are in the creek bed and the flood plain, to raise the tops of them out of the flood plain, and we put some, what we call top hats, kind of in order to keep the storm water out of the sanitary. Of that, of that $500,000, we had 85,000, let's call it $86,000 left, and communicated with community of all block grant people, and they're going to allow us to use that $86,000 left over from the block grant and apply it to this $107,900. It's going to leave the city cost just a little bit less than $22,000. So I'm really, I'm really thrilled that we were able to do this, be able to use those CDBG funds for this project.
That is cool.
You know, the first $500,000 was designated in the city to eliminate inflow and infiltration, and the CDBG folks thought that us trying to identify locations of inflow and infiltration was a very logical addition, so that's why they allowed us to really use it. We are anxious to get this approved by the city council, so that we can get the meters in the system for the spring rains.
So if we approve it tonight, how soon will they get those meters in?
Middle of March. We're, we're, right now, they're talking toward the end of March.
Wonderful.
We'll see what we can do to push them up on that, but, you know, normally, the wettest months of the year typically are, you know, April and May.
Some in March.
You know, and of course, you know, it's, as Bill pointed out, it's a 60-day period that we're talking about. You know, it's weather dependent, so normally, you want to get them in where, when it rains, so you don't have to go any longer than that.
Hopefully.
On the other hand, if it does go longer than that, then there's a per-day charge per meter.
Okay.
So this is like, if, if weather does normal things, we should have adequate data. If, if it's an incredibly dry spring, we may leave them in there for another week or two until we get another decent rain.
So the, out of the 19 meters, three of them will be ours?
No. 19 will be Burns &amp; McDonald's. Four of, we will have four that, that are, that are the same as their meters in reserve that are our meters that we can, that we can go up and micrometer, if you will, and that doesn't do a very good service to you, but meter a little bit further on top of those 19 that are ours, if we notice a significant problem in an area. Try to divide that area up a little bit more with ours.
Those ours will be step two, or phase two. But we're not gonna use our four in this initial thing with their 19, right?
Right.
We will not.
Right. I would also like you all to think about, okay, if Mary, in your area town, say it shows to be, you know, the worst area, and we go looking, how are we getting storm water into the sanitary? Some of that might be on the private side of things. Some of it's probably gonna be on the public, and some's gonna be on the private. How do we tackle those private issues? That's one of the topics that I've said that if the tax in April passes, that we would, you know, utilize first to try to do some kind of a cost share potential.
Remain, yeah, something to do with the independent homeowner.
But if it doesn't pass, it's something for you all to think about.
Good point.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Very good. We have the motion on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Yes is having. And now move on to ordinances. We do not have any first reading ordinances. It looks like we have one second reading ordinance. Bill Number 1445 has to do with rezoning an area in town. Councilman Shyland, would you please present that for second reading?
Bill Number 1445, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri, known as 208 northeast 8th Street, 811 North Bluff Street, and 813 North Bluff Street, and establish an executive date. Move that Bill Number 1445, be voted on at the next meeting.
Second.
And go for third reading.
Very good. I have a motion and a second on Bill 1445. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Good. With the call for the question, all those in favor of Bill Number 1445, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Very good. 1445 is now ready for third reading. Councilman Shyland, you take care of that?
Bill Number 1445, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning ordinance certain land in the city of Fulton, Missouri, known as 208 northeast 8th Street, 811 North Bluff Street, 813 North Bluff Street, and establish an executive date. I move that Bill Number 1445, be voted for final passing at the next meeting.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second for 1445 to be passed at third reading. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. You've heard Bill Number 1445 presented three times. And it's now time for final passage. As the clerk reads a roll, please signify your vote by yes or no.
Mr. Shyland?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snoots?
Yes.
Ms. Rickloo?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
And Mr. Cantle. We have seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Thank you. That bill is now... Oh, well, okay. We'll now consider Director Administration report for January, and all of our department heads are with us. Please address any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Page 20. A letter to J.C. Miller from the Department of Natural Resources.
Sure.
Saying they found us in compliance with the Missouri Air Conservation Law out of our landfill, I think this is.
Yes.
So congratulations, J.C. Keep up the good work. Just wanted to point that out. And on page 50, for the Vine Street Bridge. I know we're waiting for weather to finish up the approach work. How many more days of work do we think we have? And when, weather permitting, do we think that's gonna be complete?
They should be starting this week, Thursday and Friday. Gary anticipates that they'll be over there working on the inlets over there. And I'd give it, you know, a good three weeks' worth of work.
Of good weather?
Yeah.
Weather permitting. Okay, so within the next month or month and a half, we should be good. Great, thank you. And I appreciate your work on the log cabin road. Thanks for taking that up. Have you done that yet? I'm sorry.
The guys went out and put a bunch of millings on Log Cabin Road to fill in, you know, all the potholes and whatnot. It's, you know, it's not a perfect answer.
No.
You know, I'm anticipating taking that road all the way back to gravel plus millings later on this year. Maybe in conjunction with the overlay project.
Might take us all summer, kind of thing.
Well, I mean, I do think that we need to get in there and mill up, you know, grind up the existing asphalt so you're not, you don't have big chunks to deal with. And get it back into a reasonable gravel road that we can maintain.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Great. Thank you for your efforts there. Didn't want to get sat down this time.
I know this is January report, but have you fixed the epoxy mortar in the water area?
No, this says in the report that we have not done that yet. And I left it in there on purpose just so we don't lose sight of it. So, no, we haven't. You know, I'd like for the weather to get... Yeah, consistently a little warmer. I know we've had some warm days here, but consistently, day through night type ones.
What do you need to be, like, above 50 degrees or something overnight, or something like that?
That would be nice. I mean, I think at the very minimum 40, all the way.
Okay, so we're thinking May-June timeframe?
Yeah. Whenever we get it, you know, we just need to go ahead and get it scheduled.
Any other questions for Mr. Vaughn?
Make a motion to accept administration.
Okay. Very good. I have a motion and a second to approve the Director's Administration report for January. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Looks like we had a couple of board meetings since our last meeting, Planning and Zoning Met. Councilman Shyland, would you like to report on that?
Well, I feel like this is kinda redundant, Mr. Mayor. We'll just pass it. If you just love to hear me talk, I'll go into you. You can do it on it.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Good enough.
Publicity Board met, I believe, yesterday. Councilman Vaughn?
Think Kathy's already told you the main, the important stuff, and that's that the sales tax is down 2.4%. Pretty well give you a scenario of that. They did submit the approval for the January minutes. They were approved. Got an update on the warehouse. They're putting in, I think they were installing the main gate to go in. And a chain link fence has been installed. And they're using the call-out building facility now. After that, I think they're gonna start installing the cameras. I believe that was purchased around in the different areas. Landfill, you just heard about. Mike brought that up. They did get an air and water passed inspection and got a letter on that. I think they said that we could start closure of the sanitary landfill as soon as we want it, if we wanted to. Not sure where that's gonna go. Waste water treatment plant has started construction on the 4th of January. They've got a big hole in the ground, putting steel up and looking to pour some concrete pretty soon. They are, they do have a problem with water. They're pumping water pretty well full-time in the hole and predict that they will be through the biggest part of the construction. Other than that, we adjourn. Wasn't much other business.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Richard. Any questions, or Richard? I'm sure any of you'd like to go out to the sewer plant and take a review of what's going on. You know, just contact Mr. Johnson, come in. He'd be glad to do that with you. He took a few members of the utility board after the meeting the other day, and so they had a chance to look at it. Any other questions? We'll go ahead and move on with the agenda. I do not have any appointments this evening. Do have one announcement. The IMGA meeting is, will, annual meeting will be on March 15th in Springfield, Illinois. We do need to pin down for sure who's gonna go. So if you're interested in attending that meeting, you know, please let us know. It's always a very informative meeting, and this topic, of course, is natural gas.
If you're interested in going, get ahold of Corrigan by the end of the week.
Into this week, okay.
We're driving over and back the same day.
We'll go over there, come back in the same day.
That's not on a council meeting.
It is not a...
It's not a council meeting, yeah.
That's nice.
That'll be a little nicer, yes. If there's not any other announcements, I'll move on.
I actually, I have two quick ones. I'll make them very fast. We still have tickets for the humanitarian banquet, and we're selling those through my office with the city clerk. Center Court has some, the Chamber has some. But I think this is a really important event to the community, and I know we haven't really had much coverage of it as of now. So at this event, they do the Jane Beardman Fike Award, which is in honor of a female in our community that really puts forth a lot of effort to better the community. So just wanna extend an invitation to the community members, to department heads, anyone else who might be interested in attending. We still have tickets, so come see us. And then lastly, I was fortunate about a week ago to attend one of my regional city clerks' meetings. And I never get tired of introducing myself as a city clerk of Fulton. And the first thing that I get to hear is, "Well, we love your council, and we love your administration and your mayor." And I think it speaks volumes that across the state, people recognize you, and they recognize the work that you do and your ability to work together for what's best for the citizens and what's best for the community and the employees in the city of Fulton. So I just wanted to make you guys aware of that, that they do see the work that you're doing, and they have a great deal of admiration for each of you, so.
Thank you. Good job.
That might even be better, just to have a motion for adjournment.
You're seconded.
Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no.
She was quicker than when Mary...